The June 20 of 2023 Legislative Session of Anorondal County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Ms. Hummer will lead us in the invocation and pledge this evening.
Please pray as your custom. May all gathered here be blessed. May our courage match our convictions and our integrity match our hopes. May our faith bring us closer to each other. May our meeting with past and present bring blessing for the future.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we have a special presentation. We're going to go to our Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Pickard, who will present citations to writers from the Police Unity Tour. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For a second year in a row, the council is privileged and honored to acknowledge the 10 members of the Anorondal County Police Department that traveled to New Jersey to join officers from around the world to ride in the annual Police Unity Tour. This bicycle ride started in 1997 and spans a four-day period as they bike from New Jersey to Washington, D.C. to raise awareness for those who have died in the line of duty. The nearly 300-mile journey ends at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Wall, and this year, our Anorondal County Police Department team raised more than $35,000. Is that correct? $35,000? Yes. We have prepared citations to recognize both the members of the 2023 team. I want to take a minute to let my colleagues speak before we do the citations. And Mr. Barron, on behalf of the county executive. So if anybody, this is a good time if anybody wants to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the pleasure of attending the send-off from the Annapolis location on the last leg of this amazing trip you all did. And I urge the public, if you have an opportunity in the future, to support this incredible group of law enforcement and their family. It gives you chills to see the first, I guess, wave of riders and just the energy that continues throughout. And I don't know if it was orchestrated on purpose this way, but towards the end, the vehicles, all, well, a good amount of them had photos of fallen officers from around the country. And that just really brought the Unity Tour home for me. And as you can hear in my voice, it was a little emotional, but thank you for all that you do to recognize those that have fallen.
And I think my colleague from District 5 just said about all the things. This was the first year that I was able to attend the send-off in Annapolis in person, and I was really just overwhelmed by the number, the sheer number of participants and seeing all of the different police forces represented, you know, up and down the East Coast was really amazing. And every time, I thought, oh, this has got to be the last, the last group of cyclists. More kept coming. And there was another, you know, another trailer or another bus or another van. And so it's really just amazing to see how many people participated in support of their fallen officers and your colleagues. So congratulations. I also heard you raised a chunk of change, which I'm hoping Ms. Pickard will tell us about. So congratulations.
All right. And I guess I'm grateful being one of those donors to that, to that contribute, or making a contribution to that. And for me, the biggest part is, obviously, from a, I have a military background and have served in the Marines for the last 26 years. We've lost a lot of people in the military side, but it's always good when we have an institution like our police force who participates in a process that tells the world we will never forget. And, you know, us politicians up here, when we're out of our office years from now, people will forget us, and that's fine. And it's good that the legacy that will be left with the police officers that have served this county, they will not. And every year, we will pay homage and we will sing praises, sing their praise for the sacrifices they made. And I'm grateful that you were a big part of that, certainly this year, helping to sort of raise the flag on their contributions to the safety of our society. And so thank you, Chief, for being who you are and doing what you do. So.
And then back over to Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Barron, did you want to acknowledge?
Yeah, so the county exec is also providing citations to this great group. Mr. Chairman, the chief also got me, and I made sure to contribute as well. So I want to thank you all, extend the county exec's appreciation, and Ms. Pickard for helping organize the citations tonight. Thank you.
Nope, you're fine.
All right, so I'm going to call everybody up. We have Corporal Gina Chen, who was the team captain. Please join me. For those of you that can't see this, I put my reading glasses on. The Anorondal County Council congratulates you as a member of Chapter 1 on your completion of the 2023 Police Unity Tour. The county council honors your commitment and service to raising $35,650 to support the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Wall and the families of our fallen heroes. This is signed by all of the council, and the county exec also has provided a citation so that. I won't read them every time, but this is for you, team captain. And this is for Chief Amal Awad. Let's see. Sergeant Michael Smith. Corporal Dave Bellis. And Police Officer First Class Kieran Schnell. We had a few officers that couldn't be here with us. Corporal Charles Dalton, Corporal Stephen Johnson, Police Officer First Class John Thomas III, Corporal Joseph Eckliffe, and Corporal Brendan Pimlin. So we'll pass these on to Chief. And we'll get a council photo, so thank you. Well done. Can we go out this way a little bit? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But, okay, I get what you're doing. Slide back over in front. It's getting really heavy. I left you a note. I wanted to talk to you before.
Okay. All right, now back to this regular business. All the fun stuff is now, now over. I know. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
All right, we will now open our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council, there were, there was three submissions submitted through the online testimony tool. Everyone here got a copy. It's posted online, and it has been added to the record.
Is there anyone here who now wishes to speak? Please come up. I think we have three individuals that walk ups. Anastasia Hopkins, Susan, yes, Depkounas, and then Tracy Gill. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak, invitations to the audience, we've got at least one more seat, please come up. So. All right, at this time, state your name and address and your topic before making any remarks, and then we will limit you to two minutes.
Hi, my name is Anastasia Hopkins, son from Annapolis, Maryland.
Okay.
We're here tonight to speak to you about the future of the retreat property in Quiet Waters Park. It's a 19-acre property just east of the main part of the park, and it is presently a meadow surrounded by a forest. The county had plans for that property, which the county stopped last February. And I will now give you a report about how citizens feel that property should be planned. I recognize this is administrative concern, but it may come back to you, and I want you to hear what citizens feel about the use of land owned by the county. There was and still is a lease on that property by a private organization, and we feel that lease should have been terminated in February. County Executive Pittman said it would be, and we haven't heard since, despite repeated efforts to learn about the lease and its status. So we're anxious about that lease. But tonight, we're optimistic because we want to report to you what citizens feel about property, about that property. And I repeat again, the interest that you may have in this is that, how often do you get to hear what citizens really want? So on, 38 citizens met in a professionally facilitated working meeting on April 3rd of this year for two and a half hours at the Eastport Annapolis Neck Library to express their vision for the future use and development and maintenance of the Quiet Waters Park Retreat area. And citizens came from various areas of the county. The primary, almost overwhelmingly dominant vision is to keep the retreat area a natural environment with passive use without built structures or the appearance of development. The retreat area is envisioned as a meadow surrounded by forests, same as it is today, but with more native plants. It would truly be a retreat for the urbanized residents of an increasingly congested peninsula and region of Anorondal County. In summary, the citizens' vision is, keep it natural, make it native. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. It's on? Okay. Okay, I'm Susan Depkounas, also from Annapolis, Maryland, and I'm going to continue from the citizens' vision report. The area would be different in design and mood from the main Quiet Waters Park by retaining its current otherworldly, peaceful, spiritual qualities while giving visitors a sense of connection to the earth, feelings of groundedness, yet also mystery. The retreat area is a getaway from the busy, noisy world of human activity. It is a place for quiet pleasures of the soul, peacefulness, and connection to the earth and water, which may engender curiosity about the land's history, Native American Indians, and others. The retreat is a place to refresh the spirit with the joys of life as Christopher Robin experienced in Winnie the Pooh. Many Anorondal County citizens want to keep the land known as the retreat at Quiet Waters Park just that, a retreat. During COVID, many people reconnected with nature. Fortunately, that desire is still strong. People crave a sacred space more than ever. As you have heard, constituents have many wonderful ideas for natural habitats and want to be included in the plans for undeveloped land. I would like for you to consider a new zoning designation that would stipulate no build. In other words, keeping lands natural with the only improvements being getting rid of invasive vegetation and adding more native trees and plants. This would help wildlife and would lift the spirit of the people who live in Anorondal County. Please help us. Keep us informed when lands become available so that we can be a part of the planning from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I'm here with my grandson Kyler, who lives in Gingerfield.
Thank you. And what's his first name? Kyler? Okay. All right, Kyler, we're going to see you here in like 20 years, right? Right up here? Okay. Ms. Gill?
Hi, my name is Tracy Gill, and I live in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm also a member of the Friends of Quiet Water Park, Sierra Club, and the Annapolis Neck Peninsula Federation. So I'm here tonight on related issues, but mostly I have a serious concern about the lack of transparency by County Executive Stuart Pittman and Wreckin Parks about land use planning for Quiet Waters Park and the rest of the county. They're building every day. We're losing trees. They're not, I don't think they have a goal of mitigating the effects of climate change. And regarding this last thing, almost three, Quiet Waters Park, almost 300 people showed up to a meeting in January to let Stuart Pittman know that many of us want to keep the new Quiet Waters Park Retreat area wild and undeveloped. And we have not heard back on what's happening. We are being stymied. We've emailed, we've called, there's been letters to the editor in the paper, and we get nothing from him. We're his constituents. We're your constituents. And I hope that you can help us figure out what's going on with this lack of transparency. So our public lands, and particularly our parks, are jewels, and we need to think carefully about how we use them. And it should not be decided alone by the county government. Many interested citizens want to and should be allowed seats at the decision-making table. Every day, we're losing trees to development, and climate impacts are getting worse and worse. We can optimize our parks and remaining wooded public lands to reduce the impacts of climate change if we have that as a goal in our land use planning. Every decision should say, how is this going to affect our climate change effects in Anorondal County? Every time we cut down a tree or change a property, we should think, how is this going to affect us? Is it going to increase temperature, ruin our waters, our air? We've recently seen the bad impacts of air. That was fires, but climate change is really upon us. So also, regarding the proposed deal with Joel Dunn and Quiet Waters Park, giving 30-year leases of our public land away, our land's too precious for that. Our county executive and Wreckin Parks should not be able to give 30-year land leases away to their buddies. That is not acceptable. And Wreckin Parks has all but closed the door to any citizen input, and we're the citizens. I hope the county will direct Wreckin Parks to open their land use planning early and regularly to interested public. I'm almost done. Please work with us to conserve and optimize the wild ecosystems and trees of Anorondal County to help mitigate climate change. And in closing, I hope Stuart Pittman and Wreckin Parks will begin to work in good faith and in a transparent way with all the people who want to conserve Anorondal County lands and reduce the impacts of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. Matt Minahan, Edgewater, here, speaking on behalf of the Growth Action Network. Good to see you all. I'm in the slightly unusual and uncomfortable position of speaking on behalf of two bills tonight. Unusual for GAN, particularly given our support for the Bring Your Own Bag bill and the campaign finance bill. So we think that 5223...
So any, so this opportunity is for people to speak on things that are not on the printed agenda? So if there's...
I understood those were not on tonight's agenda.
Is it not? You said on... Oh, we passed them. Okay. I thought you were talking about something else tonight.
We were happy to support them.
Okay, okay.
And unusually, we're back here trying to support two more.
Got it.
That I don't think are on tonight's agenda.
Check.
And if I'm wrong, I'll step away. 5223, the, the school capacity bill.
Okay.
We think that's a big step in the right direction. There's a lot in that bill that we definitely support, including the 100% capacity limit, requiring OPZ to present the school utilization chart to the council in March if each year. Publicize the methodology. We think that's a big deal. Allow for development projects to be approved if an adjacent school system is open, and allowing for more affordable housing projects even where a school might be closed. We hope this bill survives the amendment process. We're also here in support of Bill 5323, the solar bill. We think that's a big step in the right direction. We've got some questions about it. And I'll just say, it's awfully hard for us, and probably for you too, to figure out what's in these bills with, when you don't have a work session. And so we learn what you're up to during your work sessions, and obviously, the budget prevents that from happening these months, and these are important bills. So fortunately, the administration has agreed to talk to us on a couple of these bills so we can try to get behind them.
Awesome.
So we hope, we're in support of them, we hope you will too.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Johnson, 6634, Annapolis, Maryland, and I am back again talking about some adventures that occurred to me that I'm asking you to listen to to see what you can do with legislative solutions to prevent other people from going through what I've been going through. And in the process, we've gone through step by step a bunch of these legal things that happened. And you already have a copy of the document that's Request for Adjudication, which includes a demand for judgment on affidavit. And so, and you already know that the inspector never filed an affidavit, even though he was the only witness, you know? And it gets before the judge, and the judge is supposed to read the affidavit, but there wasn't one there. But that didn't bother the judge. She, she's guilty. And we got to fix her. A $500 fine and $45 for charges. $545? And I haven't done anything wrong, to the best of my knowledge. And, you know, now, they may dispute that, but they still didn't prove it. So you've heard that part. Last week, or the last meeting, I gave you a copy of a, of a inner-office memo kind of thing, and it's titled Trial Request. Because after they served me with a citation, and we're taking you to court, I said, well, by George, I want a trial. So then, the citation was, you know, on your little paper there. The citation was issued the 3rd of, of March, excuse me, the 3rd of May, 2017, and then they received it on the 13th of 17. But then, the inspector decides he wants to have, you know, a request for trial. And so on, on August 9th of 2017, he sends an email, or this correspondence thing, and he says, I have changed from null prostitute trial request. And on August 9th, he says, the violation is screened by heavy vegetation. Now, I'm sorry. If you can't see it, how can you be a witness?
Yeah, please summarize.
And so, we didn't, no, and, all right. And I also sent you the default judgment. So here you got a packet of some documents. How, how can they do that? I mean, I'm not Goody Two Shoes. I have my feelings, lots of them, too many of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And thank you for listening. And all you guys, about Quiet Waters?
Thank you. You all can go back to your seats at this time. Was there anyone else that, that needed to speak that, on anything that's not on the printed agenda? All right, seeing no movement, the public hearing. I'm sorry. All right, the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the, the agenda? Can we do it at the end, the one you wrote me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I was going to ask that we place it at the end.
Oh, yeah, that last piece there. All right. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Rod being so moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 5th, 6th, 7th, and 14th, 2023.
Minutes of June 5th, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. Minutes of June 6th, 2023. The meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 9:06 AM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Minutes of June 7th, 2023. The meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 11:00 AM. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. Minutes of June 14th, 2023. The meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 10:00 AM and opened with the invocation given by Bishop-elect John Watts from Kingdom Life Church located in Brooklyn, Maryland, and was followed by the pledge of allegiance.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th, 6th, 7th, and 14th, 2023?
Rod being so moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of June 5th, 6th, 7th, and 14th, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 5623, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning License Dispensaries, Growers, and Processors of Cannabis. Bill Number 5723, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Anorondal County Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Community Reinvestment and Repair Special Revenue Fund. Bill Number 5823, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Deferred Retirement Option Program, Term of Participation Period, Withdrawal or Disability. Bill Number 5923, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Ground Lease Between Anorondal County and Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. Bill Number 6023, An Ordnance Concerning Hollywood on the Severn, Special Community Benefit District, Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 6123, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Fire Prevention Code, Codes and Supplements, Zoning, Recovery Residences.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2523, Resolution Nominating Tony Geddon as County Health Officer. Resolution Number 2623, Resolution Approving the Appointment of Cedric Johnson to the Police Accountability Board. Resolution Number 2723, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to Serve on the Personnel Board for Anorondal County.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4423.
Bill Number 4423, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Public Ethics, Public Safety, Classified Service, and Exempt Service Pay Schedules and Positions.
Turn it over to Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, I got a full complement here with me. We have our Director of Fiscal Affairs, Hannah Dyer, from the Budget Office, Mr. Teru, our Personnel Director, Ms. Podowsky, also on her team, Ms. Atkinson, and Ms. Heffernan. And Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is in the chief seats, but available if, if needed. We discussed this bill last meeting. 4423 is the annual pay and position control bill. Previous years, it has been brought down as separate bills. This year, we streamlined the process with one bill. 4423 enacts the new pay packages for county employees, makes changes to the number of authorized positions and position qualifications. All of the changes listed in this bill and the associated costs are reflected in the FY '24 budget that this council recently passed bipartisantly. Please pass this bill bipartisan.
I know. I know the auditor is a, has a, look at your fiscal note. I don't think that was any, anything specific, specifically related to that. Let me bring it back up. I think I just closed it here. Yeah, not this bill. I'm just reading through, trying to get in the habit of making sure I bring this fiscal note up every single time, or their comments. All right. Is there any discussion from any of the council members? Seeing no lights, we'll now open a public hearing on Bill Number 4423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair and members of the council, we did not receive anything through the online testimony tool.
I don't see anyone that signed up ahead of time as well. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on Bill 4423? All right, seeing no movement. The public hearing on Bill Number 4423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4423.
Bill Number 4423, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Public Ethics, Public Safety, Classified Service, and Exempt Service Pay Schedules and Positions.
All right, any final discussions? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4423.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4423 has been passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4623.
Bill Number 4623, An Emergency Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer, and Supplementary Appropriations.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 4623.
Bill number 4623, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
All right, Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a fourth quarter transfer bill. Please note it is an emergency bill. At the table with me, I have Mr. Teroux and Ms. Dyer and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. We also have some folks in the audience if there are specific questions. 4623, as I mentioned, is an emergency ordinance. We do this regularly every year in the fourth quarter. The ordinance comes before the council at the very end of the fiscal year to make sure all our departments are whole as we wrap up fiscal year 23, which ends in a couple of days, the end of June. This bill transfers a little over $10 million from the CAO contingency fund to cover higher-than-expected costs impacting county core agencies. You'll see one of the largest line items is the police overtime. The bill also makes an additional $1.3 million of appropriations from various county revenue sources and grant funding. The fiscal note provided by the budget team has detail, as well as the auditor's blue letter, has a good analysis of each item. Happy to answer any questions you may have on specific items. Ask you to pass this bill. And Hannah reminds me that I should have read a little bit further in my talking points. We do have an amendment coming, so we'll ask you to pass that at the appropriate time, and then pass the bill.
Any discussion from any council members, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to acknowledge the large police department transfer of $6 million. Are we looking at overtime? Did anyone want to expound on that for all the folks watching at home?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Teroux give you the rundown, and we can provide more if you need it. Thought there was somebody here from police. Oh, Henry?
Yeah.
I think he's gonna phone a friend.
All right, so we're gonna bring up Henry. Mr. Farrell.
Good evening. Henry Farrell from the Police Department. So two things are happening here, overtime and special pays. Some unique things that are happening in the overtime zone are about $1 million in community focus type things, and more than half of that is school crossings. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of 37 vacant crossing spots still today that are being filled with officers. So that was the biggest chunk of our $3 million overtime. But we do have other things going in there. There was a 5% salary increase. That alone is about a half million dollars. Court overtime is $600,000 more. Why is that so much more? Because the courts had not fully geared up in FY22 from COVID. So we're really back to where we were three years ago with court overtime. We have 21 positions out of 100 short in our communications unit. So personnel shortage overtime is up in communications. We did a wiretap investigation where we spent about $400,000 on overtime. So those are some of the things, some of the reasons that build up to that $3 million in overtime. The total's six, so the other three falls on the back of special pays. Special pays is a bit of a moving target. It's a long story. I'll boil it down for you. There are 37 different items that fall into the special pays category. They are shift differential, field training, acting out of class, comp time payouts, just a huge variety of different things. And one of those items is a school guarantee. So if an officer goes to fill a crossing spot and it takes him 20 minutes, he gets paid for two hours of that. That was kind of a side letter concept that went on between personnel and the FOP. And so that's a big number this year as well. Some things that are in there, $400,000 worth of signing and retention bonuses. We don't necessarily plan or budget for those because some of them are new and we have no idea. It's a grand moving target for us as to how many recruits we're gonna have and how many signing bonuses we're gonna have to pay out. We also have a, some FOP rules that indicate that we can allow an officer to take his comp time at one under minimum staffing, which creates overtime for us. So huge variety of things, big moving target, happens every year. I think I'm sandwiched in between two esteemed members of the administration, but I think they would agree with me that we don't always agree on what that overtime number should be, but we make good educated guesses at them and we're not always right. So I think that's where we are today.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I wanted to acknowledge the work of the Police Department in filling in as crossing guards as a mom of three school-age kids and have the pleasure of seeing some of my friendly officers serving as crossing guards outside of North County High School all year. Really, I really, the community does appreciate the, I believe I could speak for the community and the police providing that, those positions. So I just wanted to, it was a big number, so it's good to let the community know what's happening in our Police Department. So thank you for that description.
Mr. Vol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a big number. I don't think I've ever seen it that big in five years, the fourth quarter transfers. I'm looking at the Fire Department and their overtime number is $710,000 and the Police Department is $6 million for overtime and special pays. So that is many, many multiples of that. I guess, here's kind of my question that I'm struggling with. We often think of the contingency fund in the CAO category as being for the line underneath of police, which is public work, snow removal, right? And in the event that we have a snow, we know a couple million dollars we could end up spending for that. Thankfully, we had a very mild winter, we didn't. How in the world would we have paid all of this if we had had anything that we had to pay out for snow removal from the CAO contingency fund and then we had this $6 million? Like, I'm just trying to understand how the math would work if there had been additional expenses there. So I've got more questions beyond that, but that's kind of my first one, is just what would we have done? Where's that money gonna come from?
Well, I'm gonna let the Budget Office answer that, but I don't think there was a choice. I mean, we had to cover those crossing guard shifts.
I agree.
It's, yeah.
Our great friends at the Board of En, right.
For the record, Stephen Tru from the Budget Office. Good point, Mr. Volkey. One thing I would say, in FY24, we did increase CAO contingency by $1 million, you may have remembered. And two, as part of the budget planning process, we do estimate the current year's revenues, and that usually ends up coming in with fund balance.
Okay.
So we would have that fund balance available to use in the current year versus using it in next year's budget. So generally, and it's written in the budget book as well, we have a fiscal policy to generate at least $5 million of fund balance a year.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of wiggle room outside of the CAO contingency in addition to the CAO contingency.
So you just would have had the budget for FY24 differently based on less fund balance?
Correct.
Got you. Okay.
I guess, I'm sorry, what was your last name, sir, again?
Farrell.
Farrell.
Henry Farrell from the Police.
How long have you been the Police Department's budget preparer?
I've been with the county for 33 years. I've been in the Police Department about 20.
And you've been like their lead for integrating the budget requirements with the Budget Office, correct?
That's correct.
How long have you been doing that?
20 years.
20 years. Is anything in that request gives you alarm as far as the requirements that are in there?
I think the, my alarm would be that, as I mentioned, I started off to say, it's a complicated story. Some of it has to do with the faults of our current financial system in that we enter time into an e-time system. It interfaces with ADP system, which interfaces with J.D. Edwards, the financial system. Somewhere in one of those three interfaces, data is getting lost as to what we're spending our overtime on. That's been a problem for 20 years. It's being resolved by use of telestaff, which is a little bit new to us. And Stephen using Tableau and one of our strategic planners in our department are now able to analyze data coming out of telestaff as to what are we really spending all of our overtime money on? Because it was getting lost, some portion of it was getting uncoded and lost. And so, over this past year, what we did by drilling down on it was realize that there's no money being wasted. It's all on interesting, unique things like Sandy Point traffic, Korean festival, Renaissance festival. I mean, there's a huge list of these things and they all add up to a great deal of money. And so, Stephen, correct me, he's right here, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we came up with was, wow, we're really spending a lot of money on things that are necessary.
Okay. Actually, I've got a Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, wouldn't we also have the rainy day fund if we absolutely needed it? I mean, couldn't, I mean, I realize this is probably not the ideal use, but...
There are rules about how we can use the rainy day fund, and I'm gonna turn it over to our budget folks who will tell us exactly when we can do that.
For the record, Stephen Tru from the Budget Office. So as Mr. Baron said, there are special rules. It's a revenue reserve fund, right? So you do have to meet certain criteria, and I think one is basically to cut back spending as much as you can to withhold kind of any overages, and that revenue has to come in as a shortfall. So you have to be projecting that revenue is gonna come short before you can tap into that rainy day fund.
Okay, Mr. Vol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, I'm gonna switch gears. The Chesapeake Bay Ferry feasibility study for $18,400, Office of Transportation. So this is not necessarily in my district, it's more in Councilwoman Fiedler's district, but I had the chance to go to the MPA, is that what it's called? National Park that they want to put in at Whitehall? CNRPA. Those people do not want a ferry down there. So I guess the question is, we're spending $18,400 of this money on a ferry feasibility study, but in looking at that, I mean, I went to that meeting and I think some folks, maybe from the County Execs Office, were there, Congressman Sarbanes was there, there were community leaders there. The congressman was explaining sort of the vision, he's working with Senator Van Hollen on it. Is this part of that, is this Chesapeake Bay Ferry feasibility study part of that Whitehall National Park that they're looking at?
I believe the ferry comes from a Visitors Bureau, like Economic Development Grant, but I do think we have some folks here from Transportation. I think we have Ms. McGill Belk, she's here.
Yep. Hey, Crystal. I think you're just as far as, sir. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen McGill Belk. Hi, Kristen McGill Belk from Officer Transportation. Yes, the Officer Transportation was asked to support the visit Annapolis and Anoronal, Inc., with a matching, a local match whereby they receive a grant, MOU grant. So the $18,400 is to support that grant that they were asking to do the feasibility study.
So I think we, and I wasn't in attendance for that meeting, I do know that there's some discussion about the location of where any kind of ferry would be. Would it be economically viable? Would it help the tourism industry? Would it help our local economy? So I think there's a lot of validity in looking into it, and this was a request to match what the Visitors Bureau was able to get. And there is an amendment coming that deals with some additional Office of Transportation grants, so that we'll discuss that at the appropriate time.
I have more questions, but you all lit up after I asked this, so happy to stay on this line.
Did you want to finish those?
I'm good on this line, but I think my colleagues have some for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Not to add to the level of complexity, but it is a very complex issue. In addition, I actually just had a meeting on this yesterday. In addition to the CNRA proposal, there is a secondary group looking at ways to support this particular property. It's the Chesapeake Gateway Initiative. And in that discussion, I know ferry was brought up again. So I think it's coming from a few different areas, and it looks like Transportation took the lead on funding it. There are a diverse amount of feelings on this project. From that meeting alone, I know that there's a lot of interest, so I appreciate the question. I would just say that there is so much yet to still be uncovered and shared with the public, and it's going to happen first with Congress and an introduction of legislation that we don't know the details of yet. So I don't want to get too far ahead on that one, but I do appreciate the ask on that particular line item. If I could go back to, sorry, we're jumping all over the place, the Police Department and crossing guards, understanding that that was a large portion of overtime, I think. Where is the department in hiring additional crossing guards? I know that there was a large initiative at the beginning of the school year, and I had hoped that maybe we'd have some more of those filled, but it seems like it's become a stagnant hiring process.
So we're doing well.
Okay.
Not great.
Yeah.
We have, we started the year with 121 guards and we ended the year with 139. So we're doing a variety of things. We have a recruitment video that's about to go on the website. There is, there are folks that show up at all community events trying to foster some interest in crossing guards, things on the Police Department's Facebook page. And the number one response getter for us has been putting signs out next, right at the crossings where the officers are working that says, "We need help here. If you're interested, contact this number." And that's been the number one response getter for us so far. So we've got people on the pipeline for next year, and we're making strides. It's not good enough yet, but we're moving in the right direction.
If I may ask a follow-up question? I know the department is doing everything that they can to try to recruit for these very unique positions because it is only a short period of time in the morning and afternoon. Do you find that the number of applicants to those who actually accept the position is, there's a large difference there, meaning that perhaps they've accepted other jobs in the meantime, or what do you think's the biggest challenge with it?
Honestly don't know that information, but I can have somebody put that together for you and send it to you.
Okay.
Glad to do that.
Full disclosure, I went through the process. It would have been a violation for me to be, become a crossing guard, but I know it does, there is a decent period of time to get through the personnel process, and I'd be interested to know if there's anything that we can do as a council to try to speed that up, legislation or otherwise.
I'm glad I didn't say there were some conflicts of interest.
I tried, maybe another way.
There is, I mean, it does involve children, so there's an extensive background check. And so that, there is some time involved there. I'm sure we can put together what steps have been taken.
There's some background and some weeding out of folks, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Well, this wasn't my comment, but I was just gonna say kudos to my colleague for being willing to sign up for that, you know, very needed position, and unfortunately, the conflict, yes, does get in the way. My comment really, or maybe this is someone can elaborate on, maybe Ms. Gill Belk might be able to elaborate, but my understanding is the...
Thank you.
My comment slash question was that, my understanding was that ferry would have multiple stops around the Chesapeake Bay, and so this wasn't solely limited to the one spot. I know that, you know, that has, there's been a lot of back and forth about, but, you know, Annapolis and District 6 certainly have hopes for being stops on the ferry. And I believe, is that correct? Okay.
Just for the record, she said yes.
And finally, Mr. Vol.
Back again. Thank you. Central services utility costs $2 million. What came in that much higher than what we anticipated?
For the record, again, Stephen Tru from the Budget Office. So I would say it's kind of a combination of all of them. The cost of electricity jumped 24% over the last year, natural gas or 25%. So between those two, that really makes up the bulk of them. And you saw that flow into the FY24 budget as well with utility cost increases as well.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm just still hurt that we can't volunteer to be a crossing guard? Even volunteering? Even volunteering?
She got all, she got the little sign and everything, but then they took it away.
Interesting. I didn't know that.
You all make the policies and talk to...
Can we change?
Talk to the council.
Talk to Mr. Botsaris.
Code exception?
Yeah. For crossing guards. Huh. Interesting. Now we know. All right. Seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, do we receive any, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4623. Did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything through the online testimony tool, Mr. Chair.
I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Bill 4623? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 4623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4623.
Bill Number 4623, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth quarter fund transfer and supplementary appropriations.
And then Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment increases the supplemental appropriation to the Office of Transportation for contractual services.
Mr. Barron.
Yes, thank you. Asked that you move this amendment. It is $134,000 for insurance increases based on service and accident history and direct charge cost increases of $100,000 based on increase in spares for service delivery. And I can, got any questions? Ms. McGill Belk, come back up here and answer.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
All right. Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
All right. Any discussions on Amendment Number 1? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
All right. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4623.
Bill Number 4623, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth quarter fund transfer and supplementary appropriations.
All right. Is there any final discussion on Bill Number 4623? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4623. This is the emergency bill. It will require five votes to pass.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4623 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4723.
Bill Number 4723, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation and transfer of funds.
All right. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like 4623, this is an annual event, except this time for our friends at the Board of Education. 4723 is the fourth quarter transfer bill for the BOE. Sticking with me at the table is Ms. Dyer and Mr. Thru and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. The new face you see is Mr. Stansky and we have Ms. Camilla from the Board of Ed behind us for technical support if there are questions. As I mentioned, it's an emergency bill. Legislation accounts for $21 million and change of unanticipated grant revenue and transfers of an additional $14 million and change from categories that saw unanticipated savings. The auditors' blue letter and the fiscal note provide a breakdown of the individual items. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stansky if he has any comments.
For the record, Matt Stansky, acting chief operating officer, no comments. This is our typical fourth quarter supplemental and transfer bill and happy to answer any questions the council may have.
I guess my question is, why are you still acting? Just putting a plug in there for you. But I'm just plugging, I'm just giving a plug for you. So they need to get on it. Let's see. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The $11.2 million for textbooks and classroom supplies stood out immediately. Can you give some detail to what that includes?
Sure. So we're opening three new elementary schools, well, replacement elementary schools next year, as well as we're buying additional supplies for the Mead High School replacement. We made a policy decision a few years ago to remove out of the capital budget any sort of textbook, anything that doesn't have a useful life of more than, say, 10 years. And so when we do these renovations now, we will use fourth quarter money, if available, to upgrade the instructional materials or the technology in the buildings. So that's, that's a component of it. And then we are doing upgrades for musical instruments, athletic equipment, library books, and some additional Chromebooks as well that have been damaged.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a follow-up question? I know when we just did the budget OIT, I believe had money in for computer replacements that were purchased at the beginning of COVID. What is the projection for the school system for all of those, those Chromebooks that came with the federal funding? They also have a lifespan?
They do. I would not feel super comfortable giving you an exact figure, but probably in the $20 to $25 million range over the next seven years.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Volke.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Stansky, I wasn't trying to beat up on you about the crossing guard thing earlier, so I hope you didn't take it that way. I was speaking more to the elected members. But with that, you're taking $9.35 million from the student transportation services. How did you find the savings there? And I guess the reason I'm asking is, you know, we've had this conversation about the buses and the shortage and all that. You're taking money away from that and moving into other things. And I get it, but what was the source of the savings to allow you to do that? Because we continue to have these bus issues and we continue to get emails from constituents about it.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question, Mr. Volke. So essentially, it is every time a route goes unrun because of either a vacant driver or a driver calls out, we essentially don't pay for that route for that day. And so while out of the 181 days this year, we had one day where all of our routes were filled and ran and we are proud of that one day. It's on, you know, it's just not acceptable. And with, you know, this council's support, we are able to, in the county executive's support, we were able to put a 10% quota in for our contracted drivers for this year and we will have another 10% for next year. I am happy to say that our vacancy rate as we closed the school year was the lowest it's been all year. We had 37 CDL driver vacancies. And so with that, with a combination of rapidly expanding our, our alternative vehicle program so those smaller vehicles can run those longer non-public special education routes which freed up buses, we were able to see, for the most part, on a day-to-day basis, 10 to 12 unfilled bus routes daily that really for the second semester, but every time we have one of those, we don't, we don't pay for it. And so that then accumulates the savings in that transportation category, which, as you pointed out, not where you want to save money, but we took the opportunity to use that to, you know, fund some deferred maintenance things in, in our buildings. So that's, that's where it is.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And just for anybody watching at home, we're not defunding student transportation. This is a savings that is basically a fund balance fall over that we're now reallocating. So thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I just want to say that I'm very happy to do the transfer for new furniture at Mead High School. We're getting a beautiful renovation, thanks to our partners at the federal government. And it's nice that we'll have all new furniture to go in the new renovation.
There you go. All right. Seeing no additional discussion, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4723. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything through the online testimony tool, Mr. Chair.
And I don't see anyone that had signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill 4723? Seeing no movement. The public hearing on Bill Number 4723 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4723.
Bill Number 4723, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation and transfer of funds.
Any final discussions? All right. Seeing no, this is an emergency piece of legislation and will require five votes. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4723.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4723 has been passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call, read the title of Bill Number 4823.
Bill Number 4823, an ordinance concerning modification to conveyance of surplus property, Freetown Road in Glen Burnie, Maryland.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me at the table is Ms. Harold, our Director at Central Services, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is sticking with us, I think, for every bill tonight. 4823 modifies conditions of an existing lease between the county and Bello McCree, Inc., concerning a property located at 7765 Freetown Road in Glen Burnie. The current lease contains language requiring the property to be used as a residential facility for individuals with developmental disabilities. The organization has requested that the restriction be changed to allow them to convert the property into administrative and office space. The property still must be used to support their mission. They provide, in a community-based setting, much of those services. 4823 makes changes to the deed and our good reps from Office of Law and Central Services can answer any questions.
Ms. Hummer.
Is the property currently being used as residential or, and they want to change it now to office space?
Sure. Susan Harold, Office of Central Services. For the most part, the residential homes have been integrated into the community. I believe there's one left that is serving as the home, excuse me, they would like to relocate that home into the community and make that like a training and office space.
What district is that? Is it? Mr. Volke, go ahead.
My district. Got an email. Ms. Corby was kind enough to send it earlier. Piece of testimony from a constituent who was very opposed, vehemently opposed to this change on the deed restriction. So I guess, is there anybody, maybe you, maybe Mr. Barron, maybe Mr. Daniels who is in the back, who could speak to why the deed restriction was placed originally, what sort of the history is with this? Looking at Ms. Blair Klausmeyer to see if maybe she knows, you know, anybody, because the, the issue that this person has highlighted in the testimony that we've received is, you know, there was a 2001 deed that had, I guess, these restrictions in it and the question is, they're very opposed to taking that out. I just want to know what is the history? What's the reason for it? Okay. Good luck.
I can speak from what I've seen. Lori Blair Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. My understanding is in 2021, yeah, I mean, 2001, which was, you know, 22 years ago, there was more of, I think it was more of a treatment model than it is today. Today, it is more integration into the community. And so at the time, it was envisioned that it would be used as a residential facility, but over time, as kind of this model of integration has occurred, it's no longer really needed as a residential facility and they need it for other types of uses, property for other types of uses. That's what I've seen as far as an explanation.
Can I follow up?
Please.
Thank you. So understanding that, I guess, was there some consideration for keeping it that way? I guess the best I can think about it is, if this deed restriction was placed, somebody wanted it and for some reason, they accepted the deed restriction. Do we know what, if anything, was exchanged in order to get that deed restriction?
I don't have my 20-year-old file with me. I could go back and look and provide you that information.
I'm not going to say you'd have the file, but you might have the file.
I might, I guarantee you I have a file. I keep everything. I, if I remember correctly, the property was transferred, I want to say it was a dollar, but I can't swear to that. I'd have to go back and look.
So the landowner gave up the property for very little consideration?
Well, we are the landowner.
We, okay, we are the landowner.
So we deeded it to Bella McCree with this restriction. And my guess is that the notion was, we'll give it to you for a dollar, but you can't then do something else with it. So we placed the deed restriction on it for the residential treatment.
Then I'm trying to understand why this private person cares.
Why your constituent cares?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know why.
I don't either. That's, that's the piece I don't understand. For some reason, I had in my mind that maybe this person was somehow affected or it had been their interest, but it's us.
No, it's, it was county property. The county deeded it over to Bella McCree with that condition and they've just come back to us so they can use it for other than just residential.
Makes things a lot easier. Thank you.
Ms. Radvian.
I thought maybe I'd respond. I got the impression from the, the letter that they were concerned about the capacity for individuals with developmental disabilities to have space in Anorono County. And so that was, was that?
Like a decrease in the space?
Yeah, that this would be a decrease and that they were concerned about the amount. But anyway, that's just my interpretation.
Was it long? Yeah. That was my interpretation.
All right. Any additional comments from the council? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 40, let's say 48? 4823. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive any submissions through the online testimony tool. We did, I did get a copy of the email that Mr. Volke just referenced that I will add to the meeting record.
Thank you. I also don't see that anyone signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Bill 4823? All right. Seeing no movement, public hearing on Bill Number 4823 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4823.
Bill Number 4823, an ordinance concerning modification to conveyance of surplus property, Freetown Road in Glen Burnie, Maryland.
All right. Volke.
Just last question. Mr. Barron, on behalf of the administration, any concerns from Department of Aging about capacity for folks in the developmental disability community?
They were consulted before we brought this forward.
And no issues?
No issues.
Tracking. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4823.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4823 has been passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4923.
Bill Number 4923, an ordinance concerning Second Amendment to Lease Between Anorono County, Maryland and Bates School Limited Partnership.
Mr. Barron.
I am switching out our central services team. Mr. Daniels is joining me. Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is still here. 4923 amends a lease between the county and Bates Senior Housing, the portion of the property that is used as senior housing. The county entered a lease with the partnership in 2005. In 2015, agreed to extend the lease through 2055. The partnership has approached the county and requested a subsequent extension of the lease so that they may secure private financing for renovations to living units, common spaces, and the facilities HVAC system. We have folks here to answer any questions, but you all, if you haven't been there, it's a wonderful place. It's a historic high school here in Annapolis that was converted to senior living.
Ms. Radvian.
I would just add that this is in my district and it is indeed in need of some of the renovations that they're hoping to accomplish with a renewed lease, that a renewed lease would facilitate. So I asked my colleagues to support this. It's a, as Mr. Barron said, it is a wonderful space. It's the, formerly the only high school that African-Americans could attend in the county for a very long time. attend in the county for a very long time.
So we would extend this lease to 2097. Please pass this.
I hope I can get to 2097 to see that renewal. Be interesting. Let's see here. So we'll now open a public hearing on Bill Number 4923. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
All right, no one signed up ahead of schedule as well? Anyone in the audience who wants to speak on 4923? Seeing no movement, public hearing on 4923 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4923.
Bill Number 4923, an ordinance concerning Second Amendment to Lease Between Anarundel County, Maryland and Bates School Limited Partnership.
Any additional discussion? Seeing no lights, please call the role on 4923.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4923 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5023.
Bill Number 5023, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, tax credits, disabled veterans and their surviving spouses, and retired veterans' duration.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My bill, just want to thank the co-sponsors, Ms. Ledbetter, Ms. Fiedler, and Mr. Smith for joining. The purpose of this legislation, as you can see, is to remove the five-year limitation for which a disabled veteran is allowed to claim the tax credit. Currently, they are only allowed to claim that credit for up to five total years. This removes that five-year cap and allows them to continue to claim that tax credit into perpetuity for up to 50 years. We did have to put a cap on it because in speaking with Mr. Bennett, our understanding under state law is that we have to have some kind of cap because you cannot do this forever. So that's why we have the 50-year end life on it. But with that, I think this is something that we can do for our veterans, particularly our disabled veterans who have given so much for us. So with that, I'd ask my colleagues' support when we vote on this. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Mr. Barron real quick.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to introduce the team here, you have Hannah Dyer, Mr. Stephen Teroux, Brian Shank is from Finances, available for questions if we need him, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. Administration is comfortable with this bill, as you all are aware, and I think the auditor's blue letter noted, the fiscal effect of this is spread through the county tax base due to our tax revenue cap. The, I think, administration does appreciate Mr. Volkey and the sponsors sharing this bill in advance and giving us a chance to comment. We agree with Mr. Bennett's analysis that you do need to put some time limit, 50 years. It's reasonable, it's fine. County Executive will be happy to sign the bill.
And then I'm going to go to Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shannon Ledbetter, District Seven. I just wanted, for the matter of record, to state, the public is probably very aware, because it was part of my, it's part of who I am, but I am part of a veteran family. I do have family members who are veterans. I wanted to make sure it was clear that there are no members of my family who qualify to benefit from this bill in any way. I did speak to Ethics about it, and they said it was fine for me to participate in this. I just wanted to state that for a matter of record separately from that statement. I thank you, Mr. Volkey, for partnering on this. This is, I think this is a wonderful bill. I always love hearing appreciation from, you know, when our community appreciates what our veterans have done and continue to do for our country. I also think there is, there's economic benefit to the county as well when we encourage our veterans to continue to live here. There's a lot of other ways that they spend money and help to contribute to the revenue of our county. And so they're, they're very, and beyond revenue, they're very valuable members of our community as far as community service, leadership, involvement, that sort of thing. And so there's a lot of, lot of benefits to this bill. And I would appreciate my colleagues' support tonight and appreciate the administration's support as well.
All right. I too am a veteran. I do not benefit from this bill, just for, as a matter of record, nor does any one of my family benefit from this piece of legislation as well. So I hope in 50 years I can be here to advocate for this one renewal as well. So, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I wanted to be added as a co-sponsor of this bill as the daughter of a Vietnam-disabled veteran who served two tours in Vietnam, although does not live in Anarundel County. So he won't actually benefit from this. But I do obviously support the, the end result of this bill and happy to see Mr. Volkey get to possibly a 7-0 vote on one of his bills. Well done.
Oh, my God. That just made me happy right there. Ms. Hummer.
And yes, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor as well as the daughter and the wife of Army veterans. I'm all for it, and I would not benefit from this even, so.
Oh, Ms. Rodvian. Ms. Rodvian.
I'm, I'm going to join as, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Lots of military folks in my family, none other than my husband, who reside in Anarundel County, and he is not a disabled veteran.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, just for record, Mr. Volkey has majority Democrats who have sponsored this legislation with us, so.
Write it down.
Write it down. Mark this day.
It's been written down. I'm putting it in an email, and I might paint it on the wall. The bill will now read, introduced by the entire council.
All right. So we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5023. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council. We actually received two submissions plus one that came via email. That has all been added to the meeting record. Everyone here got a copy of the email, and it has been posted online.
All right. I don't see anyone that signed up ahead of time to speak. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Bill 5023? All right, seeing no movement, public hearing on 5023 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5023.
Bill Number 5023, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, tax credits, disabled veterans and their surviving spouses, and retired veterans' duration.
All right. Is there any final discussion? Seeing no lights, please call the role on Bill Number 5023.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5023 has been passed.
Good job, Ms. Johnson. All right, under other business, before you all, is there any other business? And I know Ms. Rodvian has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. I wanted to raise the suggestion with my colleagues to see if they would be amenable to a virtual work session on July 11th.
So motion to adopt, or motion to have a virtual meeting on, which I'm supportive, on July 11th for the work session?
I make that motion.
And I will second it. Any discussion on a virtual meeting for July 11th work session?
As it's my 51st birthday
Wow.
On July 11th, I will just ask that the council provide cake on an alternate day. But wait a minute. Mr. Smith and I both had to be here on our birthdays, so that is not fair.
Cake, cake is a deal. I'm going to get it. Do we have to make a roll call on that, ma'am?
Just going to recommend that you do what you do with the preliminary motion where you ask for, you know, all in favor, opposed. If you have any opposition, we can do a roll call.
Understood. All in favor, we have of making the July 11th work session virtual?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, always have it. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. County Council is adjourned until July 3, 2023.